Good evening, everyone. I'm Patsy Brescher, Chairman of the Charter Revision Commission for the City of Norwalk. It is 6:02 and I'm opening the meeting. This is a meeting with the members' representation from the councils, common council to review items and recommendations from the council or concerns to the Charter Revision Commission. So the first thing is our roll call and Rick McQuaid.
Here.
Michael Witherspoon.
Here.
Carl Dickens.
Here.
Tyler Fairburn. Benita Watford-Raleigh. Angela Wasuma. Patsy Brescher, so we do have a forum. And I'd also like to recognize any of the council, common council members that are present. So President Greg Bennett, do you have a list of individuals?
Yes, yes, thank you, Chairman Brescher. We've established a subcommittee of the common council that will shepherd the charter revision discussions with the Charter Revision Commission. And that subcommittee consists of Councilmember Nora Niedelski-Eichner, Councilmember David Hooverman, Councilmember Barbara Smith, Councilmember Jen McMurr, and Councilmember Ed Camacho.
And, and yourself?
And including myself, Greg Burnett.
Okay, thank you very much.
And present so far on the call is Councilmember Barbara Smith, Councilmember Ed Camacho, and Councilmember Nora Niedelski-Eichner.
Okay, and yourself, thank you very much. And yourself, and we welcome you all. And this is an exciting evening for all of us after the long haul that we've been going through. So the first thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of May 24th. And so a motion from one of our commissioners is in order.
Go move.
Okay, okay, I, I do have a couple of basically typos, I believe, to have correction. And on page three, article four, it begins with liberation, and I think the word is deliberation. And, and that same section, four paragraphs down, the last sentence on the page says, "It is not a power grab," he said, "a four-year mayor term has a lot of benefits, but if people do not want it, will not hurt his feelings." He suggested if the commission is going to bump it out, that they take it out of the CR. So CR is a question that should be are changed. Any other comments or corrections? Will the maker of the motions accept those changes?
Accept those changes.
And the secondar? Yes, thank you. Okay, all those in favor then have the minutes as amended.
Okay.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it, all in favor. And then on June 1st, again, a motion to receive and accept is in, in order.
Second.
Okay, so I again have a couple of corrections on page two relative to the library director. He reminded everybody that the library board position were, positions were elected and reviewed the details of the provision. That is, I believe, totally an error, so I believe they are pointed. And the next paragraph down, the sentence just doesn't end. So I don't know how we get that corrected if we want to table those until the stenographer can correct them.
Make a motion, we table them until the stenographer predicts what comes.
I appreciate that, thank you. Second to the motion, please.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. So now we can get to the meat of the meeting here. And Dave, do you want to lead us through this discussion?
Oh, I didn't.
Mr. Mednick?
I'm here. The, there is public comment. I don't know if there's anybody waiting.
You're just. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anybody waiting?
I don't think there was last time I looked, hold on.
We have two attendees, but no one has their hands up at the moment. With Sophia and No One Neighborhood Association, but no one raised their hand.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so no one raised their hand, so we could carry on.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be happy to introduce the next portion of the session, which is really a discussion. It's under the state law involving charter revision. The first meeting back from the, after the council sends its resolution over to us is a conferral meeting. And we have the president, we have other leaders of the body, the Special Committee on Charter Revision he's put together. And it's his opportunity to present the highlights, and I think he'll just provide highlights. There's a lot of detail, and let me, if I, if I may, Mr. President, before you go on, the resolution is fairly detailed, as you can see. And what, what the resolution was a result of was the series of meetings the council had. As they were conducting their meetings, I was taking notes. And, and wherever there was any doubt about consensus, I would ask the members if there was consensus. And where there was, I would make the changes, mainly editorial changes, edit changes, corrections, scrivener's corrections, whatever you want to call them, errata. In some cases, members of the council, at least two of them that are on this call, made some very extensive, three of them that are on this call, made some very extensive comments and changes. Those were reflected as well. And, and they're reflected in the details of this document. I think what the president will do is he'll go through and talk broadly about the council function and how they, and what they did. And then he'll talk about a couple of the substantive issues that we're going to need to address, including the one he already addressed with regard to the voting standards. So it's my, my honor to present the president of the council, Greg Burnett.
Okay, and before the president begins, the records show that David Hooverman has joined the meeting. Mr. President?
Thank you, Chairman Brescher, and thank you, Attorney Mednick. As was stated, the Charter Revision Commission presented their initial draft of the revisions to the charter on June 2nd to the common council. Shortly thereafter, the common council conducted workshops and public, public meetings, as, as well as a public hearing on the council revisions. And we stepped through each of the articles in terms of identifying additional edits and changes to the charter after the Charter Revision Commission's initial set of work. What you see before you is, is a combination of both of those entities' works. I won't step through each and every item, but there are several indications that you see where there are either changings in the, the terminology, the nomenclature within the charter, grammatical changes, and other key items that basically makes the charter, I'll use the term more readable and user-friendly in terms of understanding how the governance of the City of Norwalk works per the charter. You will also see in each of the items that there, there are notations as to the specific council member who might have submitted that particular change. And as was stated earlier, some of our council members have provided several items for clarity and, and updating. Councilmember Nora Niedelski, I'll, I'll just point out, Councilmember Nora Niedelski-Eichner, as well as Councilmember Ed Camacho. You can see they're referenced in the document in terms of offering updates. One item I wanted to point out specifically is item number 22. And item number 22 speaks to the terms of office specific either for the mayor or the common council. This particular item, which was recommended that the mayor's term extend to, from a two-year term to a four-year term. We are going to, I'll, I'll use the term postpone at this time in terms of including on the November ballot for the electorates to consider. So that will not be an item that we will be addressing on this first path. We will undertake it on the next set of discussions and, and charter revision work that will take place after the November ballot. So wanted to point that out, that item 22, we are not going to address at this time, but will address going forward. That is the recommendation of the council at this point.
Okay, thank you so much for that explanation. Are, are there any council members that want to address any specific article here? And for any questions of the commission for our rationale of doing, making these suggestions? And also for the record, I now see that Benita Watford-Raleigh has joined our, our meeting. I can't see if anybody has raised their hand, so does anybody want to articulate anything further?
There's no show of hands.
Yep, no show of hands. Well, that's, that's amazing. Any other suggestions or comments that anyone would like to make?
I see Attorney Mednick has his hand raised.
Okay.
I, I will, before he speaks, I will state that Attorney Mednick has done an outstanding job in capturing the, the spirit, the thought, the specific changes that the, that both the Charter Revision Commission, as well as the council, would like to see go forward in terms of updating of the, of the charter. One other item that I wanted to point out, there, there are several, several items under, areas, I should say, under item 21, whereby the, the, we being the council will need to do further work, and we plan, we will do that work, which is related to the voting standards. There's, there's several iterations where it's mentioned as to whether there should be a majority vote, two-thirds vote. Our work ahead is to clarify each of these items under item. Item 21 is approximately 22 various locations where we will have to come to consensus on the appropriate voting standard in each of those articles. So that is work to be done, and, and the subcommittee will undertake that work within the next few weeks.
Okay, the, the commission has been provided that list of article where those changes are anticipated to be discussed, potential changes. And so we will get those, and I, I think I have to ask Attorney Mednick, well, we then have another responsibility to review those again.
Yeah, so.
What is the process?
Yeah, that's what I was going to explain. Thank you. You're, you're prescient, Ms. Brescher.
Thank you.
The.
I thought you were going to say avian shit.
No, prescient, prescient. The, uh, what I was going to suggest, and, and the president pointed this out as well, that's the largest outstanding piece of work that we need to do. But one of the things I wanted to point out to everybody, while the council members, if they want to come, they should, they should be, feel free to be here. But there's a number of items that a council member, Camacho, proposed near the end of the process. It's really critical that during this stage, that we maintain communication, even if members of the council are not here, before we take actions on certain items, not the ones that are on the list, but the new ones that we have to look at in terms of language, the voting standards. We want to make sure that as long as we agree on the concept, that we all then agree on the language. Because when the language goes back to the council, the council doesn't get to amend. They get to vote up or down on the individual items or collectively. And so they can approve some things, they could not approve other things. So it's important that when they go through the voting standards, that I presumably will make sure that somebody from that group comes and meets with us and go, we go through the standards and that we get it right. And it's up to the council, they're going to be socializing presumably with their colleagues to make sure they have a majority vote on, in August, to make sure that they have it, because we can't modify it on the floor in August. We can only modify it now here at the commission. It's unfortunately the way charter revision works. It's pretty unusual for a legislative body not to have full legislative discretion, but the process kind of whittles it down to a point where you, because of the interactions between the two bodies, where you basically provide a final report that they can go up or down on. So that's the big substantive issue. The president also mentioned the substantive issue of asking the commission to forego on the, on the four-year term for mayor. I think that the rationale had been that it was being put off for two cycles. Anyhow, we're mandating a charter revision in two years. Why not tackle the issue? Because it's not just, I want to point out for the record, it's not as simple as simply aligning the council and the mayor. You also need to, if you're going to have a unitary system of elections, to align the Board of Ed. So there's a third, there's a third group that right now has two different elections. And if you're looking at those terms, we have to fix an alignment for all three entities, the Board of Ed, the mayor, and the common council. And as I pointed out, a, a council member, Camacho, there, his items are near the end of the document. I will, if, if it's all right with you, Madam Chair, I will start working with them. I don't think that there's anything controversial in his sections, but I'll work on the language and I'll try to run it by him as well before we, at our next meeting, go through this in some more detail. But it's really important in this process, is the point I want to underscore for a second time without being obnoxious, that we maintain real, solid communications with the leadership and members of the council to make sure that we minimize any friction and minimize any problems. We want to make sure that when this document goes over to them, with the exception of whatever erratas may be left, when it goes to them, we want to make sure that they've got a document that they can either approve or disapprove in whole or in part. They have a right to disapprove things, but they don't have a right to amend. So that's, I want to make sure that, that everything is clean and clear when it gets back to them. That's my only point. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, can you review the, the timeline and the actual dates? Have, do we have dates established for this process?
No, we, that, we'll discuss that after the conferral, but let me talk broadly. The council will be acting in its final stage on the 15th. I don't know, is that official, Mr. President, the 15th of August?
That is correct. That will be, that will be a special meeting of the common council to, to vote on the charter revision. And as well, we will be working on the language in terms of the, the language that will be on the ballot for, for the electorates to vote, vote on.
Yeah, and that's a very important point. The night that they vote on the final report, they will first vote on the final report. If they approve the final report, they will vote on ballot question, question or questions. And I will, I've talked to the president, I'll be working with him on giving some thoughts on what those questions can look like, so they're ready to do that. The other thing I didn't mention, I don't think Greg and our conversation, Mr. President, and our conversation today, was that you probably should vote to authorize the town clerk to, to prepare a, an explanatory text as well. Because under statute, the town clerk is permitted to publish an explanatory text that goes through chapter by chapter, explain, or article by article, explaining what is in the charter. We also have to, just for the record, publish the charter within 30 days after August 15th. So by September 14th, 15th, it has to be published, which means we probably have to get it in the first week in September. My experience with newspapers, I don't know why, they almost need like a two-week lead time. So we, and in this case, it's not going to be hard, because it's not going to be a red line, it's going to be the full document. Because there's no way to do a red line with the changes that we made this time around. So the big date is they will approve on the 15th or disapprove, they will act on the 15th, I won't presume anything. We have to file by the 10th, by either Thursday, the 10th, hopefully by Wednesday, the 9th, so that they'll have everything filed properly for their meeting, their special meeting on the 15th. And we will need to set up, Madam Chair, members of the commission, one or two meetings in between now and then. And at least one meeting to meet with the council, the council on those voting standards. I mean, they can, they can simply submit it to us, but I think if there's a discussion, if members of the commission have a difference of opinion with the commi, the council members, it would probably be useful to have members of the council at that meeting. So we'll talk, try to coordinate that with the president to, he's got to set up his meeting. And then after they meet, we would then have to meet with a representative of that group or the entire.
Yeah, so let me try to make sure we understand this. So we have two more meetings with the commission to review all of these items and, and respond accordingly.
We have to schedule them, yeah.
Yeah, but we have to have them.
At least two.
Two, two, and then, then we would have a third one again with the common council.
Well, they could be in one of those two meetings, or we could have a third meeting. It's, it really depends. At our next, let me just, in our next meeting, my hope would be to walk you through the document with the changes, to, to really do a deep dive through the document with the changes. We, we would then hopefully have an opportunity to discuss the substantive, substantive issue of the four-year term. We won't be ready at the next meeting to discuss the standards, because the council will be looking at that and coming back to us. So the hope would be after that meeting, any corrections would be taken up at the following meeting. And with any hope, we would be ready for, to receive whatever the council comes up with on the voting standards. So my hope is it would be two meetings, three at the most in this process, and, and then getting it filed on the 9th or 10th of August.
Okay, so some of the concerns here are your availability. And then from the council's point of view, President Burnett, you know, you're scheduling that either the second or the third meeting where, where we would be together again. And I'm sure you have a lot of constraints on time there, so how can we get that established soon? Because, you know, obviously it's vacation time, and we, we want to make sure we have forums.
I was going to suggest that why don't you take a look at the next two Wednesdays, Madam Chair, which has been your night. I've kept, I've kept Wednesday's clear to try to get us through this. So I have Wednesday, the 26th clear, and Wednesday, the 2nd clear.
Okay, so are commission members present? Can you respond to your availability for those two days, please? So it's July 26th and August 2nd.
Yeah, and if on the 26th, if you don't mind moving, starting at 8, because I have a 6 o'clock final meeting of my charter commission in New Haven that shouldn't last two hours, but I don't, you know, I.
But that's a heavy discussion evening. So starting at 8 is a little tough, that's the best you can do?
Well, I have a 6 o'clock, so.
I'm negotiating here.
Why don't we try 7:30?
Okay. All right, so can our commissioners unmute themselves and respond if you're available? Benita?
Yeah, I can, I'm away next week, working from Sunday until next Friday.
So the 26th is no good, is that what you're saying?
Not good for me, no. I'm back for the following week, but I, I'm not available and wouldn't even be able to be able to get on Zoom.
Okay, okay, so Carl? Carl?
Carl's hand is up.
Yep, his hand is up. I, I can't see any of that, unfortunately.
I finally read the manual how to unmute. I'm good for, if we do it at 6 or, what was the other time?
7:30, it was 7:30 for next Wednesday.
I'm good either date for the 26th or the 2nd, I just moved something on the 2nd, so.
Okay, Michael?
I'm good on the 26th and the 2nd.
Okay, and I am available. And we don't have Tyler or Angela. So we don't know if we would have a quorum, but let's shoot for that and see what happens.
Right. I know that the council president was talking about trying to do something on the 31st or the 1st of August, if I, as I recall, so I'm holding those dates open for him as well.
That, that is correct, and that would be a meeting of the subcommittee to begin our discussion on the voting standards.
Yep.
Okay, and, and what time, Mr. President, were you thinking?
This, this would be a meeting of the subcommittee, not the, not the commission, that is correct.
Okay, okay, good. So it would be the, the next meeting then, so we do have to schedule something beyond August 2nd.
How about August, I mean, I hate to push it this far out, but it's the Wednesday, oh, we could do Monday, the 7th? No, I'm sorry. No, I, I have a Board of Alderman meeting that night. How about Wednesday, the 9th? If we need it.
Yeah.
That may be tough for me, though, that I, my sons get married that Saturday, so.
Okay.
I'm probably have to be followed somewhere.
So on the 26th, we're meeting at 7:30, and on the 2nd, we're meeting at 6?
You can meet at 6, on the 2nd, you can meet at 6, yes.
Okay, that's good, that's good, okay. So we have to work on this next date.
Do you want to do two days in a row, the 2nd and 3rd of August, Wednesday and Thursday?
But this would be with the subcommittee.
Uh, well, maybe.
This is the 3rd.
The subcommittee, yes, they worked on, on the 31st or the 1st, they might be able to join us on the 2nd or the 3rd, if we have both days.
Mr. President, what, what's your feeling on that date?
Um, the.
You need to get back to us.
Well, the preferred date would be the, the, the first, excuse me, the preferred date would be August 2nd, because August 3rd, we already have special, special, special meetings taking place on the 3rd. I see Councilmember Barbara Smith has a hand raised.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to point out, there are currently common council meetings scheduled for August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. But being summertime, there is a chance of one or more of them being canceled, but we don't know that yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and, and the, the meeting of the subcommittee would, would either be before, before or after those regularly scheduled meetings.
Right, so we do a target, we target that date and then see what happens.
Yeah, so if any date, let's target August 2nd, and, and the 3rd is, is not available.
Why don't we try to schedule with the commission the 2nd and the 3rd? Why don't we try to schedule with the commission the second and the third, because if we meet with them on the second, we can maybe finalize on the third. To do two nights in a row, yeah.
Okay, but at it, at a six o'clock?
Six o'clock's fine for me.
Okay. Okay, all right, well, these are, hopefully can hold, um, that we can establish the forums that we need. Uh, is there anything further that we need to discuss or plan for?
No.
Um, any other comments from either the common council members or the commissioners? I can't see if there's any.
Carl, Carl has, um, a council member Hooverman has his hand up, Madam.
Okay.
I think uh, Mr. Dickens has his hand up also, but I don't know if that's, it was up for a while.
I think it's a permanent condition.
It is, it's a shoulder injury. Always was.
I I just had a a structural question, if we're draw, if we're looking at taking the uh, four year term. Out, does that mean we're looking at a single resolution? Uh, for this uh, this charter revision? Because I know that we we would talked about that being a separate item, so we would be crafting language for a single resolution on the ballot initiative.
Yes, if I may, Madam um, Chair.
Yes.
The President, President, I had a chat about this today, it's a council decision, not a commission decision, um, but my recommendation is a single question. And the real que, and I was going to draft several ideas, uh, maybe for your subcommittee to take a look at. Uh, of what a single question could look like, a single question could be as simple as. Uh, do you support? Uh, or shall the report of the title commission be approved, or of the charter revision commission be approved? Question mark, yes or no? Um, the um, the um, explanatory text. That um, Rick's office will prepare, uh, the the work on Rick's office to prepare will lay out everything. The uh, the alternative is a single question that says, um, uh, shall you approve, shall the public approve? Uh, a charter, revised charter, reorganized, revised, updated, whatever terms, uh, we feel comfortable with charter, that includes. A, uh, more transparency, B, organization, three, update from nineteen thirteen or something, you know, I'm giving you examples of. Broad categories, and so wh- what we want to do is, uh, as we develop it, if you want to have a multi-tier, but not too long, uh, question. I think that the le, the council leadership would have to decide, what are the key themes? That are being included, because you're not going to be able to include every element. Of an eighty, well, almost a two hundred page document, but the the eighty-eight pages are the uh, the real uh, meat of it. So my recommendation at this stage, if the mayoral term goes away, would be to have one question.
And and as you're saying, that's something that that the subcommittee will work on crafting and then discussing with the with the councils.
Yeah, I was going to do some drafting for the subcommittee to take a look at different ideas.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
And and for clarification, the commission would have no input on that.
The commission's entitled to input, but not legally, uh, it is a, that is a council decision. Um, the com, the com, the council may ask you for input, um, and we did provide input, by the way, uh. Um, on 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 that, when we uh, talked about it in our, uh, in your transmittal. So certainly.
Great, and and I know that that's been a concern of the commissioners uh, through the whole process. That that it be as simple and as clear and as, you know, as positively clustered as possible.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I was going to suggest.
Yes.
That Mr. Mignick, um, Mr. Metnick, uh. Uh. You know, will craft it um, this way, but sort of in the nature of a cross-examination question, where you're basically. Answering the question for the, for the witness, if you will, so we did that drafted in a way that kind of answers that that, that answers the thing, the affirmative for people when they read it.
Yes.
Get, to get around that, but if if it's something like that could be. Uh, um, taken into account when they're drafting the question, that would be a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be, I think it's a great idea, and I'll, I'll certainly uh, talk to the commission, I've been working with them for. A long period of time, and I know that they're interested, I was just pointing out that it's a council function uh, in the end, um, so uh. Uh, I I hear your point, Councilmember, and I will take that into account when I'm drafting. And when, uh, I'll sit with your subcommittee and and try to work it out to make sure, you want to have a question that is clear and concise, you you'll be shocked. At the things that people attack in questions, um, I use the term updated. And uh, in one of my towns, what the hell does that mean? What does that mean? That's a loaded term, that doesn't mean anything. Okay, but to some people it did, and so it's uh, so I want to make sure that we don't run any quote updated type problems, so we want to make sure things are clear. Uh, and that the themes are as as broad as they can be to encompass what we think has been done. Um, because and if we can't get there, then the simplest question would be the solitary question, do you support the package, basically? Do you support the final report? Uh, that's the most anodyne way to go with it. Um, I prefer, if you can come up with a thematic question that gives the voters a sense of what you've done. Um, I think you're better, but uh, if we can't, then we can't, we'll we'll get there at some point.
And uh, just for informational purposes, I am um, contacting all of the district, uh, the first, second, third and sixth. Uh, to meet with them during their monthly meetings in September. To um, address uh, the charter revision and try to answer any of their concerns or questions. So um, I just think it's very positive, uh, very important for all of us to start talking to as many people as we possibly can. To garner as much support as we are to answer any concerns. So um, I think that we all have to think in terms of how we can make that happen.
Uh, I'm sure, uh, but, um.
No, I was just going to say, I do have a question when you get around to it, but that's okay.
And and after Carl, uh, Benita, Commissioner, uh, Watford Riley has a question and the town clerk has a question as well.
Actually, I don't have a question, I was just going to piggyback on on Patsy, so if I could do that now. It's just that, I just wanted to know, whose responsibility is it to inform the public and and what ways? Is it possible to get the word out as much as possible?
Should I try to answer that, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay, so once. Once you send the report over to the council, you still exist. But there's really no function for the commission, the commission goes out of business the moment the council acts on the items, so if they approve it. You're out of business, if they disapprove it, you're out of business. What I've said to you all from the beginning, and I'll say this to the members of the council who are here as well. Um, it then moves from officialdom to politics. And what you need to think about doing on a bipartisan basis, if you can, is to put together a political action committee. Um, and that action committee could be comprised of members of the council, members of the commission. Um, people who are not involved with commission, people who are in um, in the, in the civic world and political world, uh, in the community. Raise enough money to put up some lawn signs, uh, especially if you think there's going to be opposition. Uh, and to put out um, palm cards, at least for election day. Or even distrib, distribution to have the candidates for council, is anybody up for election this, oh yeah, you have a fall election this year, you have a two year term. Sorry, everybody's running, and so you might want to ask members of the council on, from all parties to uh. Distribute literature urging people to vote yay, so that that's an informal, private. Political function, uh, that I cannot encourage more than I am, I I encourage it very strongly. Um, I think you're going to have less of a political problem this time, but you want to make sure people come out and vote for it, there will be a tail off. And and you want to keep it in the press. The other thing I would recommend is that uh. Have some op-eds that go out, maybe the president and the chair can do a joint op-ed from the two bodies after the thing. Um, after the uh, charter is approved, or the chair and the vice chair and the president and other members of the council. Um, can do things just to keep the charter in the public eye during the course of the year, I don't know if the Norwalk hour. Or any online publications uh, provide opportunities, but I would take advantage of every opportunity. And then I also pointed out that Rick's office has a statutory capacity, a statutory ability. To issue the explanatory texts, it is um, an appropriate legal public expenditure funds, it's the only. Public money that could be spent in the election cycle for the uh, objective lay, you know, the objective recitation of what's in the charter.
Uh, can you explain issue, the dimensions of the word issue?
The dimensions.
Yeah, how, you know, issue it and what.
Publish, yeah, he he, um, they should certainly place it all the polling places. My recommendation is to get it done in early, in in, by mid-September, so that you could distribute it to libraries, you could distribute it to bodegas. You could distribute it to any number of places, you probably shouldn't be taking it door to door. It's not supposed to be an advocacy piece, but you want to make sure that people see, this is the charter, these are the charter questions. Um, and so i- you can, it's really a function of how many you want to publish. And whether you think that they can be distributed in any realistic way, Rick can also publish it on the website. Uh, and and I would say that the the city of Norwalk cover page of the website should say, you read about the charter, push here, and then. The uh, recommendations, not the recommendations, the um, the explanatory text would come up. So you want to make sure, and that's a wonderful thing about having commuter technologies, so everybody has direct access. But you can publish it far and wide, every school, there should, you know, any place where there's uh, parents coming into a school. Um, there should be uh, an explanatory text, so the people know about it, and it's a legal expenditure, again, it's not advocating, it's simply explaining.
Steve, I can add to that a little bit too, is that back in two thousand sixteen. Before we had the pleasure of thinking that we should have you help us on our charters, we did them on our own. Uh, which brought me to, I had to write all the explanations uh, for that charter, and there were, I think there were six. Uh, different questions at the time, uh, we did a really. Big campaign on it, we actually, I worked with your registrar. And we made sure all the voting places, we made all the, the libraries, all, all the places got the word out. Uh, but I look forward with, working with you on the questions, because I wrote the last ones. And, well, I don't know, didn't get a four year term for town clerk. Well, so, but I look forward to it, but I think uh, uh, we've learned a lesson that if we're going to do charters in the future. We we need someone like you to help us get through them, that's for sure, definitely, but I look forward to working with you on those. Uh, pieces, and we want to get them out as soon as possible.
Yeah, definitely. Once, once the council acts on it, I think we we can sit down with their.
Right to work on, yes, thank you.
And any other hands up or comments?
And is Carl's hand still up from the last time?
Ed? I was just going to add that uh, uh, last time, you know, we tried to enlist the helping organizations like the Chamber of Commerce.
Right.
Who uh, agreed to distribute to their business, you know, the uh, members of the Chamber of Commerce, the flyers. Uh, the lawn signs that we created, um, unfortunately. At the end, uh, after the election, all two hundred lawn signs were still in the Chamber of Commerce's offices. Uh, so that was not done, but I think this time around, if we start, if we do it early enough, and at that. In two thousand sixteen, I think we waited a very long time to get all this organized, so. Um, I think, you know, listing the help of organizations like that, uh, is also a good thing.
That was clearly why I I wanted us to discuss this, so we can really start thinking about it and we don't lose time and momentum.
Yeah, I would say the moment that this is approved on August fifteenth. Uh, very shortly thereafter, Madam Chair and and other leaders, uh, you should come together informally and form a PAC. Do whatever you need to do to form a political action committee, raise sufficient funds to get some lawn signs and stuff like that. Um, so that uh, the public knows that something is happening.
Hey. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Councilmember Hooverman has his hand up, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, just a a quick question, Madam Chair, uh, of uh, Attorney Metnick, just, do you, the formation of. That PAC or anything like that must wait until the formal action has been taken?
Oh, no, 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 you could do it, I I I I'm just saying that you guys have been, I didn't want to be presumptuous. Uh, I know that in your next door town, uh, there's already a PAC formed to oppose the charter. Uh, and so I've said to people who support the charter, uh, you better wake up, you you can't wait till the end, so you can form a PAC anytime you want. Um, and and so uh, I was just trying to be respectful of the time commitments you all have between now and the fifteenth of Au- August, but you can absolutely.
Whether there was a statutory issue that we were.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
But forming a PAC is by individuals without being uh, members of the council or the commission.
Yeah, you're not a, you're not doing it as a council, not as a commission, it would be individual members uh, of the bodies. I also recommend you reach out to members of the Republican and Democratic town committees, um. The Communist Party, whoever else is in town, you know. Working families, working families.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, questions?
Carl's hand's been up since September.
Okay.
It's true, I now forgot what I was going to say, no, I'm kidding.
Thank you.
I was going to just, eh. I'll just reiterate what everybody's saying about as far as getting the word out. Think about any organization that you know, it doesn't ha, matter how big or how small it is, or you may get some people together. That, you know, there's enough of us to go around to have a quick show up meeting, even if we just went across and explained to people the votes, it's coming up. And here was our objective and, you know, the three pages that we had that Patsy delivered. A couple, three weeks ago, this was the goals that we set out to do. But the main thing to remind people to familiarize themselves with what we've said, and don't forget. On election day, you know, form your opinion, go vote, blah, 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 um. I think that uh. Yeah, I mean, obviously, we've got two outlets for media in the town. Um, so we got to make sure that they both come on board, there shouldn't be any reason why not. Uh, radio, we could also approach for uh, public service announcements.
Or Channel twelve.
And Channel twelve, uh, so all of that kind of stuff, you know, we should be thinking about, um. I think it was Ed that mentioned the Chamber of Commerce, uh, I don't know when their next meeting is, but even if we can get on their meeting. Whatever meeting is coming up for five minutes, that would be helpful, just to get the word out to people so that they know what's happening. Um, so in it, it's tough, but it's a grassroots thing, so.
Yeah. May I just make? Comment? Yeah, uh, I think it's pretty clear that if the leadership of the Democratic Town Committee. And the leadership of Republican Town Committee support the measure. It will pass, it's not, there's, there's, there's very little question about that. So I think the Democratic Town Committee, uh, and Norwalk Democrats, I think as a. You know, as a culture, I guess, uh, wouldn't, uh, would probably support this, so the question is. You know, how can we work together as political parties to get everyone on board? So that, you know, rather than do a scattershot approach, you know, go right to the core of of uh, of the leadership that's required. Uh, to get everyone, you know, most of the people in the city on board.
Yeah, I agree, and I've been sending stuff to the Republican folks since we started, and so. They've been kind enough to repurpose and send it back out to their membership and stuff, I've been disappointed, I haven't seen a lot of faces in any of the public. Meetings, but I have gotten phone calls, but um, I do think that that that's an excellent idea, and there's no reason that they should say no. Because it's in their best interest also to know what this is and support it, or at least voice an opinion on.
Um. And I would point out, if both parties are supporting it, you so develop a PAC. Uh, there is an ability for uh, town committees to transfer fun and funds that way, would take some pressure off the PAC, if both parties are out there, it'd be hard to imagine. Any other entity that would be able to stand up if, if if the candidates for council on both sides are distributing candidates for mayor. Are distributing literature and there's lawn signs on uh, R and D properties, um, you'd be in very good shape, that's. That is the ultimate dream I have, it it has happened in in many of my communities. Uh, and 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 if you could pull that off, that would be a a wonderful way, it would take pressure off of your. Fundraising element of it and 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 use the existing institutions to do the job.
Right, I would, I would just add one other thing too, and I, this would go to the PAC and whoever wants to answer the legalese about using the PAC money. Um, we could do yard signs and that stuff, but then a lot of it ended up like what Ed said. Um, but you could get people together in groups to go do it. But I will, as we all know, and you've all run for office many times, it's not easy to get signs out different places, um, but. Could we use that PAC money to go to the neighborhoods? So in other words, could we sponsor a coffee, or could we sponsor something with beverages or something early afternoon?
It's not, it's not we, Carl, it would be the ad hoc committee.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I just for the record, I just want to, yeah, have it clear.
What did he say, sponsor? I lost him at a point there.
No, I was saying like the pack money.
Okay.
So the group that's put together and use some of the pack money, we get any pack money, could we sponsor? Neighborhood events that we could go to the neighborhood instead of always asking the neighborhood to come to us at City Hall or wherever, we go to the neighborhood.
Sure.
That the pack would go to the neighborhood.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
I also do think that palm cards work really well, at least. I think they do in the elections to get people out to the polls. And so if we use the palm cards. To let people, not we, if the pack let uses the cards in order to, um. To get people to those neighborhood functions or to tell them where they can pick up a copy or information about. The charter, that would help a lot.
I would, I would only say that if we're gonna, if the pack's gonna spend money. Uh, instead of palm cards, because I have a different viewpoint on palm cards, but a direct mail campaign. Even if it's just a single piece, it goes into, it's not that hard to get the registered voters and vote parties. Uh, and people that at least have voted in the last two campaigns and that sort of stuff. And send them a flyer that says this is what's going to be on the ballot and. Even give them a name and a number to call a pack member to give them further information if they want to have that.
Madam Chair, uh, Rick and, uh, council member Hooverman have their hands up.
Okay, uh, Rick.
Yeah, I I was just going to say that, um. Carl got me on the wrong track, Joe.
That's my job.
That I I believe from my office with all the input I've been getting over the last couple of months over the. The charter, that we're going to have a much easier time getting it. Approved or voted on or discussions going away without the four year term in there. I think the four year term was a stickler, uh, you know, and others, you know, eh, even agreed that maybe the next charter revision should take it on as. One of their, uh, task. So I I think we're gonna, if we can get. The town committees together, and I think we can also get some of the ones that were strongly against the charter. With the four year term in there to work with us on getting this, because this was a lot of work to get a document workable. That, you know, once it's workable, then you can start making changes to it. So. I I think we're in good shape, but we really still, if we can get everybody on board, we're going to be able to, uh, really push this through this time.
Great. Okay, anyone else?
Richard, as you and I talked about, is that, yes, on the four year term, if it was part of the charter.
Right.
You and I both talked to people that were favorable, that if it was a four year term but a separate voting issue, then that puts a whole new light on.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, okay, anything else? Anyone else?
David, a council member Hooverman has his hand.
Okay, David.
I just really, I, I think that, I think the idea of bringing like minded people together from both sides of the aisle. And forming a pack is a great idea because I think it it gives us the broadest reach throughout the community. The, the, the simp, the sort of minutia of how we go about it, what instruments we decide to use. I think that's for that pack to work out and decide.
Right.
What I, what I really want to say right now is I want to commend all of you in the, the Charter Revision, uh, uh, Commission. For the work that you guys have done over this course of time guided by Attorney Mednick. I'm, uh, it it's, you know, in a way, it warms my heart to see this kind of of work being done. And the fact that that you guys have taken this on and done this work. I I just have to commend that. It it's a, you guys did a a huge heavy lift and I appreciated a great deal.
Steve, can I jump in just real quick? I I I wanted to say this at the end of the last meeting and it ended rather quickly, but I understand why. To tag on to David, I wanted to say that, thank you very much for the kudos coming our way. I want to throw kudos back to the people I'm looking at on this screen now. It seems to be the same councilmatic people. That's been at every meeting, almost at every meeting, and some of you have been at every meeting. I'm a little disappointed in some other council members that haven't made a meeting. Or some other things. So anyway, but you guys, much appreciated that you showed this kind of interest.
Can I just say something in every, I'm, I.
Yes, you may.
All the kind words people have said about me in this process, but remember, I'm, I'm just the hairstylist here. You come in, you ask me to clip your hair, and my job is to make you look as good as I can. Look at, that's, uh, that's.
You're looking good, Rick. I like it.
My only, my only Henry Kissinger quote, it's one of my favorite Kissinger quotes. But here's what I want to say. Uh, the commission, uh, Mister President, members of the council that you, you put together is a, it's a really outstanding. Group of people. I've worked for thirty years with commissions throughout the state. And this is one of the best. Patty has brought great leadership. Uh, Rick has been a great leader. It's been an honor to work with all of them. It's just an outstanding group of people. There's not a weak, not a weak link in this commission in any way, shape or form. And then finally, the council has been as supportive as any legislative body. You're the appointing authority. This is your. This is your project on the statutes. It's not the mayor. The mayor's been great, by the way. I just want to say the mayor's been outstanding. But this is not a mayor's function. This is a legislative function. And 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 so right from the beginning, when, first time I met with you and Thomas presiding, and and Greg has been just wonderful to work with. This council has been enormously supportive, and so I think it's been a great balance. Um, I feel very, very lucky. Um, I I I won't talk about any of my other charters right now. I think people know my views on at least one of them. Uh, uh, but this has just been freestanding regardless of any comparison. Really a terrific event, and it's largely because of the people that are involved. And I just wanted to, uh, express my appreciation in that respect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, are we done for the evening? Is there a motion to adjourn from the commission?
So moved.
All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Hi, we are adjourned.
Good night, all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.